Effect for our children, being in home, not having the consistency of being at school. My children were out for 30 days for one of them, the other one was 24, and both teachers have responded. They're great kids, however, they are behind in school. So I'm very nervous, not only for my own children, but the children in the district that have come from different backgrounds, have different households participating, where some parents may have to work, some may not. My concern is that if they're sent home, how will they proceed once they go back to school? Is this going to set them behind? So I would encourage looking into alternative options such as Random Lake currently does an in-person and simultaneous virtual situation. It may be offering that up as an option so that parents have that and can still maintain for those children who would sue better in school, the ability to stay in school, as well as stockfill schools, go through a A/B planning where some students go to school Mondays and Tuesdays, there's a thorough cleaning on Wednesdays, and then other students go on Thursday, Friday. So that instruction would be determined by teachers. I understand as an instructor, it does put an extra load on the teachers, but I feel like as a school, we're here to see the children be successful and help with their differences, let it be mental learning, all of the above. So I would strongly encourage still having options for children to be able to attend in school. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your thoughtful comments. Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it. All right. Next item is our consent agenda, and on the consent agenda we have four items: minutes of the October 26, 2020 regular board meeting, dispersments posted to November 9, 2020, ratification of contracts, and resignation. Do I have a motion in support of adopting the consent agenda?
But moved.
Motion by Nancy Justman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kurt Rebholz. Thank you. Any final discussion?
The only thing I'd comment on, just so the public knows, we use ratification of contracts and resignations oftentimes as a placeholder. We aren't always approving resignations and contracts every single meeting, so, just so people know that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Any other discussion? All right, I will roll call vote. Mrs. Justman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dove is absent. Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
And that is a yes as well. That's six to zero. Thank you, everyone. All right, and before I go onward, also because Mrs. Dove is absent, Mr. Ongert has agreed to serve as our acting clerk for the meeting. I presume there are no objections? None being heard? Thank you for your service there. All right, on to the superintendent's report.
Thanks. As our students noted, we are nearing the end of our fall athletic season, and superintendents have been, interestingly, in the game of athletics this year for just with the pandemic and in those pieces, we have a hand in planning. We are nearing the final stages of planning for our winter sports. They include a lot more things moving indoors, so there's just careful attention, things like wrestling, gymnastics, bowling, all of those will be at different venues, not necessarily our school. So there's just a lot of careful planning going into that to make sure that we can do the same as we did in fall, which is create opportunities for our students. So we're nearing the completion parts of that. Sometimes you hear rumors swirling, like, I heard that they're not having sports. It's like, no, we're still working on it, working on that plan. So those are coming. We continue to work with our public health partners, Children's Hospital and local and regional superintendents. You saw that the Washington County superintendents joined together to do a shared letter to our families and our communities, just signifying the level of collaboration that we have and in support of each other. I think all of us in our county are working to keep in-person instruction and, you know, kind of taking down those walls between districts and, like, what do you have going on? How about this? How can I support this? And, you know, we're really working weekly in a variety of venues and continue to do that. Over the last month, I've been visiting schools, working with principals. We've had an eye specifically towards, it's funny, we just approved the budget, but we literally turned the corner and start planning the next budget. In this month, focused on the facilities and our budget planning with that in mind as we look to kind of renew and refresh our short and long-term facility planning piece and the budget around that. So we did some very detailed walkthroughs with principals, solicited input from our custodians, maintenance, and certainly our Buildings and Grounds Department and our staff. We want to start with, what's the instructional vision and how do our facilities support that? And then all of a sudden, this year, you know, with pandemic, it shifted where we thought education was, and all of a sudden, we're back with desks and rows, and how were we able to pivot? And how do we make sure we have flexible learning environments moving forward? So those have been really interesting conversations. Our first quarter has officially ended, so we'll be moving into that next quarter. And another piece at the district level, we've been really assessing our current continuous improvement plans, kind of strategizing how to bring that forward with our staff for a discussion, as well as our administrators and then our board. We're in attention to the collective capacity of our organization, our staff. Our focus needs to be on instruction on students and clearing a path for our teachers to be able to do that. We need to let staff kind of serve in that capacity and just create the conditions in which they can do their work. So we're just looking at what might be a competing interest and how we need to scale that back and move different things forward because of that. So we're interested in kind of creating a couple teams. Lenny Hansen, Director of Human Resources, and I'll be starting up a superintendent's council for the district. Lenny will be working with the sports staff, how we can keep our collective staff engaged and involved in those discussions. Because again, the greatest gift we can give our students is amazing instruction and support at that school level, so we just really need to work with the educators on the front lines to help cultivate that. So those are things that we are working on.
Any questions for the superintendent? All right. Thank you for your report. All right, we have three action items on our agenda. The first one is approval of employee assistance program vendor selection, and Mr. Lenny Hansen will be helping us. Mr. Hansen?
All right, good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Wimmer, thank you for welcoming me again today. At our last meeting, I shared with you that after a very long search, the district was finally wrapping up a search for a upgraded employee assistance program for our employees, and we are excited tonight to propose to you a new vendor selection for your approval. So we covered a lot at the last meeting, so I won't rehash too much, but I do have in the presentation just some basic background information about our current provider. As you may recall, it's kind of a free throw-in with our voluntary benefits, pretty minimal level of service, only available to our full-time staff and only available to the employee themselves, none of their family members, and that we've seen on a variety of metrics that the demand for greater mental health and work-life supports for our staff has been a top priority, and we've seen that on our staff engagement results, our wellness survey, our clinic surveys, as well as data that we pulled from the usage of our health plan. It's just been screaming out, looking for more support with those mental health supports and things like that. So we engaged in our bidding process, which is laid out here. It was coordinated by our insurance broker, Willis Towers Watson, and then I list here some of the, you know, typical criteria that we used in making our selection. We ended up narrowing down to three finalists and ended up today with a proposal to go with Empathia. Empathia is a, it's a, we're getting the best of both worlds in terms of worldwide, so large-scale resources, but headquartered in Waukesha, so we get that local support. Empathia is truly just an employee and student assistance program. What you find with a lot of EAP companies is that it's, EAP is one of many other things that they do, and EAP is often not their number-one revenue earner, whereas with Empathia, this is their bread and butter with, you know, over 400 different clients. What they specialize in is two things: employee assistance program and actually student assistance program for, like, universities, kind of an EAP for colleges. So this is what they do. They not only provide EAP services, but then they do a lot of also intense incident support. So if an employer or the university has, like, a major trauma incident, pouring counseling and services in to those situations, that's kind of core to their service as well. So everything they do is about this kind of support. On top of that, as we analyze different cost elements, they were extremely affordable compared to a number of the vendors. There were kind of this vendor and another worldwide vendor that we really looked heavily at, and cost-wise, you know, when you're going with one of those larger companies, you get a much, you know, bigger bang for your buck, I guess, in terms of efficiency of the operation. So cost-wise, very competitive as well. When we look at some of the services that they're going to be able to provide enhanced above what we already have, our current model is really a three-session where you can get three counseling visits for free as part of the service. This goes to a six-session model, which is extremely important. When you talk to any of these EAP vendors, you can't resolve most common issues in three visits with a counselor, and what ends up happening then is it gets transferred over to insurance. As a self-funded insurance company, we end up incurring that cost. So that flat rate that we pay for the EAP covers whether zero people use the counseling services or whether every single person uses a full six visits. So it actually can, if it's used well, can actually defer some costs off of health insurance, which is a major benefit. This expands access to every employee we have, as well as every member of their household, or if they have students at college, they're covered as well. So all of those supports can be accessed by all those additional people because, as we know, you know, the employee maybe isn't experiencing significant difficulty, but if there's someone in their houses, that's going to impact the employee, right? So we want everybody to have access to those resources. One of the big things that set Empathia ahead of a number of the other competitors was the quality of those people who answer the phone call. So at a lot of EAPs, what you get when you answer, when you call, you get, like, an intake person, and then they try to forward you over. Every phone call is answered by someone with a master's degree in either counseling or social worker or one of those types of areas, and that is your initial counseling visit there to help you and get you on the right track. True experts in what they do. Empathia's been a leader even before the pandemic in terms of not just in-person counseling, but virtual and telephonic, so they adapted very smoothly to the pandemic, which was something we thought was very valuable. Rather than a company that's had to throw together a bunch of things really at the last minute to adapt to this, they've been doing this for a long time. One of the other things that Empathia offers that a lot of the other competitors don't is the last item on this bullet point, which is support for supervisors who are managing difficult situations with employees. We know that that can be a real stressor both for the employee and for the supervisor, and to help those supervisors navigate those situations in a positive way, that's an additional support service they offer. Some of the areas that they offer mental health support in are listed here. I won't go through them all, but a ton of different areas that honestly, as you look around, you could name, if not yourself, a lot of people you know that maybe struggle with one of these items. A lot of times, people think of EAP only for depression or grief, but technology overload, burnout, all these types of things that are really affecting people, especially during the pandemic, Empathia specializes in supporting. One of the greatest advantages and a huge upgrade over our current EAP that is provided as well are the work-life resources that are provided, which I list here. I highlighted a few of them, but there's a ton more. So legal advice. I know a lot of companies will offer you a voluntary benefit where you can pay to get discounted legal advice. Not super necessary when you have an EAP like this. You can get 30 minutes free legal advising from an attorney per issue that you have, again, free as part of the EAP. You can get an unlimited number of visits with a certified financial planner through the EAP. You know, elder care, senior care is a huge issue, you know, when someone has to find that service for a parent. In Empathia, you tell them what you're looking for, they'll go out and basically be your concierge, looking for all the available options, looking at what your criteria is, come back to you, present what your options are. Those type of work-life balance items, I think, are going to be hugely valuable to our employees, as well as a number of the other pieces that I laid out here. Finally, when you look at it, you know, obviously, metrics can only tell you so much, but Empathia blew away the competitors in terms of a lot of the data that they could point to as what makes them successful. They prided themselves on how quickly that phone is answered by that master's-level counselor. The percent of the cases solved within the EAP, it says 97%, meaning only 3% aren't resolved by their counselors and end up going over to health insurance, that just crushed all the other competitors, which were usually around only 80% being solved within the EAP. And while I don't want to say that the EAP pays for itself, if that many are deferred from going to health insurance, that's a significant cost savings as well, as well as a superior service because you're getting it so instantly. As you may know right now, getting in with, you know, in the healthcare field with mental health professionals and things like that is extremely difficult because of the lack of supply of individuals that are qualified for that, whereas with the EAP, you're getting instant access to those. The other piece, the other one that stood out to me was that tenure with the company. Empathia's average tenure of their counselors was 13 years. The next closest competitor was five years. I mean, that just, to me, really showed that what they are doing as a company and their mission, everybody believes in because they're sticking around to make that happen. So that's a quick summary of where we've come, looking tonight for a motion to approve the selection of Empathia as our EAP vendor and opening to questions, discussion.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hansen?
This is Paul. Thank you for the work on this. I believe it's a great upgrade over the current offering, so thank you for looking out for our employees. But I guess in the spirit of also looking out for the taxpayers, by no means am I, you know, concerned that this is an overspend. I think it's a very nominal number, given the coverage and the suite of services made available. But can you give us a quick summary in realizing that, you know, it's not really apples to apples because each bidder has their own offering and depths and breadth and so forth, but just in raw dollars, how did Empathia compare to the other two finalists?
One of the other finalists was virtually identical to Empathia, and then the other one was roughly 50% more expensive.
Okay.
So while I, you know, I don't want to just make it look like we went with who was cheapest, it kind of was a nice intersection of quality with cost.
Okay.
When you say identical, I'm sorry, Paul. When you say identical, do you mean the price or the services?
The price, not the service. I would say we ended up seeing that one of the vendors was considerably more expensive, a little bit smaller scale, and couldn't maybe deliver as much because of that scale, and that also was probably part of the reason for the price difference. So then, when we ended up coming down to two of the bigger ones, Empathia and another one, price was basically identical, the service difference was significant.
Great, yeah, I appreciate that you're going to get something for what you're paying for, so thanks for not just choosing the cheapest.
I would say, you know, between this, between the EAP now that we're upgrading to and our workplace clinic, I think we're offering two really outstanding services that you can't get in most school districts and give us a competitive advantage and give our employees and their families some things that make their lives easier and help them control costs in some areas of their own life.
Great. Other questions? Observations?
I think this is incredible deal.
Good pick. I like the size of the company, not too big, not too small, like the fact that they're a Wisconsin company and at a competitive price with great services, so I like this pick.
And I agree with all the comments here. If it turns out for some reason, maybe the vendor isn't exactly what we were looking for, how long of a term are we looking for for the contract?
It's one year, so we can get out relatively quickly at any point if we needed to.
I think that's good.
Did you have a chance to talk with any other of their customers?
Yep. So on all of our proposed vendors that came forward, I called multiple references and talked to, especially schools were my target, so I was able to talk to multiple schools who work with each of the vendors.
And they're all...
Obviously, when you're getting professional references, they knew who to refer you to, right? But, you know, really impressed with what we were able to see from Empathia's references. And one of the things we heard from school districts all over that are using some of these really beefed-up EAPs is that since the pandemic started, they're seeing five times the usage rate of the EAP that they were beforehand, really just emphasizing that need is there, and we'd love to fill that need.
Does Empathia have any marketing materials to promote the services they provide to our employees, or is that up to us?
Nope. That's one of the great things about Empathia is that they know how important it is to get the information out there. So in addition to supplying a bunch of upfront marketing materials, they also provide monthly materials that we can push out and things like that.
Great.
Other questions?
Lenny, in relation to the 12-month term and the fact that they're seeing such an increase in usage of their services, is there anything in the contract that limits what they may be able to do in terms of a price increase next year? My fear is that, I'll say similar to what I think we've experienced with Admentum, where there's just this explosion of demand, you know, they're pricing based on where they've been, but where you are is very, very different than where we've been, and when we come around next year, are we open to getting whatever price increase for the same equivalent block of services, or is there some type of cap that we're protected by?
So there is a cap. I was trying to bring it up on my other computer here to see what it was. There is a cap on it. I will say, we did ask what their increases have been. Granted, we're in pandemic world and everything's different, but they've been flat on their price for multiple years running, and that's one of the things when you're going with one of the larger vendors, that they're more able to absorb some of those increases, is what multiple of them talked about. But they don't do a lot of, like, three-year guarantees because the agreement is only one year. But they have not seen an increase in numerous years. Pandemic is obviously a different world, but, you know, if we need to reassess, we will.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve the purchase of the EAP program services from Empathia for a cost of $1.63 per employee per month.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Ongert and second by Ms. Schmidt to approve the EAP as presented. Any final discussion? I'll call the roll. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Dove is absent. Passes six to zero. Thank you very much. Lenny, appreciate it. Thank you. All right. And the next item on our agenda is approval of calendar modifications. And Superintendent Wimmer?
Thanks. Just popping up the calendar here. You have a link in your packet if you want to take a look at that in closer detail, but I'm going to focus on kind of the months ahead, November, December, and January. First and foremost, our staff want to be with our students and they want to be in person. That's what they selected as teachers. Those who have wanted a virtual environment have already selected that and done that. But we're remiss not to recognize the toll that quarantine's taking on our staff, our students, everyone. You've heard from our public just tonight, you know, it's best to have our kids in front of us, and we want that as well. But we know that the weeks ahead may put at risk those in-person days, and we want to look at what we could possibly do to disrupt that potential. I think too often, families are, I mean, everyone just needs to recall last spring where you're given, like, 24 hours notice that your world changed. I watch those headlines every day, I work with other superintendents where it's like, hey, we all of a sudden need to close. You know, I feel really good about the work that we're doing every single day to monitor all of our numbers so that we're staying staffed, we're, you know, I subbed, our business manager subbed, like, we're all in there doing everything we can to continue kind of all those options. But with that said, there's no perfect design for how to move forward, and we know that. But we're here to try and protect those options for our families so that we can have in-person and kind of keep all those lanes open to us. So we started this discussion at the board level and just asked, what's the appetite for exploring that? We got in-depth at our committee, and we've certainly kind of put it out to staff and had local conversations at schools. I opened up feedback to me. I'm grateful to the many staff who just reach out directly and then had administrative conversations as follow-up. As you know, the instructional calendar is something that's approved by the board. It is an item of flexibility for this year. It's a simple waiver, so we don't have to kind of make grandiose changes, those kinds of things. But what we did say was, any change, we really want to foreshadow to our families. I think that's what we've been really good about, is trying to plan for all those scenarios. So there's a couple options when we look at the weeks ahead. When you look at the November and December breaks, and I'm just going to kind of highlight here, you can see there's a couple days before each break, the 23rd and 24th is the case before Thanksgiving, and the 21st and 22nd before that winter break. In any scenario, we would propose that those switch to planning days for our staff. It's aligned to a break for our families. It allows our staff to get out ahead of something, communicate it in advance, so that our families know that if we were to make any change, if we had virtual days in there, they know exactly what's coming. Not instead of, like, oh, on the first day, I'm supposed to be virtual, I don't know what I'm even doing. So you can go and cover this entire span. So I'll lay out kind of some big options, and then we'll go back and kind of discuss pros and cons of each one. You can be in attention to this entire block, knowing, again, we're concerned mostly about those weeks that follow those breaks, just because of increased exposure, college kids at home, visiting family, et cetera. So you can be in attention to this entire block of time and put in some planning days and say, we're going to go virtual for this entire block in December and that week following when winter break ends, and that gives you your bookends after those vacations. And that would be 20 days of virtual instruction for all students to cover that entire span. Then you could say, okay, we just want to be in attention to those really, kind of those critical weeks, kind of post, we know that most cases kind of statistically come up in that five-to-seven day range post-exposure. We could do some planning days and then return to full virtual the 30th through the 4th, and we could do a virtual for the entire district in that week, and then also post-January in that week. And again, that's giving you that one-week reprieve. And then at the secondary level, there's an option around moving to cohorts in this whole kind of middle section and taking us to semester, which would be the 15th, and that's where students would have a type of A/B schedule, where they would participate in-person a couple days, and then they would participate virtually on the days they weren't in school with still their whole class. It's just physical participation in school is cut in half, and that would only be 7/12, where we would design a schedule like that. Kids are able to manage that, can stay engaged for that class period. We know that that would create an instructional shift. We would not want our kids who were at home having six and a half hours of screen time. That's not good for anyone at any age. So just working with staff around, okay, what does participation look like? How does it shift? How is it, you know, the lesson that they're there for, and doing some other things to keep that up. So just talking about too, how departments or teams could design cohorts to best meet instructional needs. So kind of backing up and going to that span, again, that's where we were talking through our curriculum committee conversation, because we want consistency for families, we want instructional rigor, we want those things for our kids, so what's in the best interest? And we've talked with families around, it's the inconsistency that hurts, the not knowing which kid is going where, when, not having enough planning time around something. So again, that's why we're surfacing the conversation. And our teachers need purposeful planning time around this. Right now, they've got a foot in both worlds. As our kids are quarantined, they're providing distance learning, and that is difficult, so we need to wrap around that so they can have the time that they need to plan that instruction. So to go back, I think the most kind of extreme, if you will, is to look at kind of that entire break, which would be the 20 days of virtual instruction. We have the same concerns echoed by the board around making sure we still had transportation. We had the ability to pull in maybe small groups that were high need, needed specialized services, that we were serving meals, and that we worked with partners to have onsite care, because the reality of... Because the reality of our families is that many are working and we need to support them in that. Are there any questions or just board thoughts around kind of that more complex? And more, and like I said, a little more extreme?
Questions?
I have a lot of questions.
All right, proceed. Mr. Angert?
Is there a reason why we are doing this or even looking at it? Is it because we can't staff our schools and we're afraid that we have to start shutting down schools? We can't get subs, too many people are getting sick or quarantined? Or is it just because we think we should do it?
The shorter answer is yes. I mean, we came dangerously close last week to having to close a school. I was prepping the letter and ready to go. We were all in classrooms. Today, I had 12 student cases. Every time I have a student case, that I'm pulling out 20 kids. So then that whole disruption of even if they're not the ones, you know, with a positive case, they're impacted by the quarantine. So as we look ahead, so today, we were looking at, okay, we're going to see maybe effects of Halloween, right? Starting in the span and had 12 cases today. And again, it's largely, we have very low transmission in schools. What we're doing is helpful, but it's just as families continue to gather, you know, create exposure. And we believe that those Thanksgiving breaks, just like I said, you're welcoming back maybe college kids, you're maybe even small group family gatherings, not having the large, my family's 45 strong. We're not having Thanksgiving like that this year. So we just think there's going to be increased exposure during those breaks, potential for travel, and just trying to get out ahead of that. Because anytime you have a positive case, we have to look back 48 hours and that's who's impacted by quarantine.
I like your idea of the AABB for the 7 through 12. I think that people would rather have a few weeks' notice than have to scramble and be quarantined for a few weeks. As much as I want to keep the schools open and I realize we're gambling a little bit. We're trying to have a crystal ball and we don't. I would hate to have to shut schools down in between and wish, looking, I don't want to regret being more prepared. I'd really like to hear what everyone else has to say, but...
On Tony's point, why 7 through 12 and not 9 through 12?
When we talked with elementary staff and our families, so we had some parent perspectives right at the curriculum committee, and that whole, you know, if I'm seven and like, do I go to school today or do I not go to school today? And what they're doing and then thinking a seven-year-old can be engaged in a synchronous...
A seventh grader?
No, I'm saying, but why not elementary? I'm talking about, this is the why, because developmentally, a seven-year-old versus, you know, a 12, 13-year-old, that's two totally different things. So you could look at that, but instructionally, you know, our instructors from younger learners were more of like, what could we do to maybe disrupt? But, you know, that's going to be really hard pressed to just start having the kids in and out in small groups.
Sure.
I mean, you could.
I understand that. The idea of the December of A/B schedule, I think you said, seventh grade or maybe you used the term secondary. Why include Badger in that? Why wouldn't you just do the high school and say that A/B schedule?
Because the seventh and eighth grade schedule runs very much like that high school. They have certain periods, they have specialized classes and all of those kind of same elements. So they could switch into that. And you also have students of an age where if they didn't have a parent home, they're generally able to care for themselves. In some unusual cases, you know, we might have some supports. And that's where we said, we still want to have the flexibility and have small enough numbers in-person. And having a cohort could do that, where if I had a student with higher needs and maybe that student needed to come every day or needed to do some additional services or supports, we could do that if we had less in-person. And we've had to, at the high school, to disrupt that, those numbers that we were seeing, we had to do the self-selected distance learning. And that was never meant to be this, you know, ongoing, select your week, choose your own adventure thing. That's really hard for families to kind of pick and for staff. We'd rather plan the instruction mindfully as well. So if I knew I had a core group coming versus like, hey, one day I have four and the next week I have, you know, 10, it's, like I said, I want them to get ahead of the instructional planning as well.
Other questions?
Superintendent, with respect to the teachers, you made the comment that they've got a foot in both camps. With this proposal, the cohort model, would you take half of each class and say, you're A and you're B? Or would you take a class, you're A, and then another section of that class becomes B? So that a teacher is only teaching in one modality each day, if that makes sense?
Right. Right now, it would be splitting that class in half. I don't have the physical space. So what I need, so I don't have six feet. That means the class, no matter what section I took, is all subject to quarantine in proximity of a student. Now, we could certainly look at, could we do that? And I just don't think we have enough large group spaces at the high school and at Badger to make it happen the way you're talking about. So it would be easier for us to arbitrarily fit, you know, like take the alphabet, split it in half so that there's consistency honoring, you know, split households. You might have different last names. We'd keep families together, certainly. But it's just trying to drive down the class size so that I can ensure that I have six feet. And that's mostly a secondary issue. So in, on average, when I have a case at the high school or at the secondary school, because the way the schedules move and the kids aren't kind of already co-horted, they can take out anywhere from 20 to 30 other students to quarantine.
So how do we then accomplish the spacing, but also not overburden our teachers to be, you know, teaching twice the volume, if that makes sense? Is it more a case of when they're in the classroom, here is what amounts to your IST work for tomorrow?
So we were talking with our teams and some of the, I think, I think we need just kind of like how we should move forward and then work with those departments to continue the design work of that. So for example, I know the CTE department reached out to me and like, hey Jen, we're, you know, we're production-heavy. How might we do this? It's like, we are very open to hearing your ideas and supporting your work. You know, other departments, you know, have looked at like, oh, could one of us specialize and take care of the virtual learning and the others of us do this? We couldn't be more open to kind of taking that next leg of design. What we wanted to do was to, what are kind of those fence posts for which we need to operate in? And how do we foreshadow this, any kind of change to our families and our own staff? But I think those opportunities for design still exist.
Thank you.
My son, who's a senior in college, he, at his school, they do AABB. And so half the class is in-person and then you get the natural distancing. And the half of the class that's virtual on A-day and in-person on B-days, they're like you are right now, Paul. They're participating, they're engaging with the instructor. It doesn't even make for, it's a different experience, but it's not so much more of a burden for the instructor. And to be honest, I mean, I've done Zoom calls for 12 hours in one day. But if you have a regular classroom length and then you have a 10-minute break, instead of walking between classes, that's your opportunity to get up, go to the bathroom, walk around a little bit. I think you can do a regular day, these older kids, I mean, the seventh to 12th grade.
Well, and we were talking about too, that instructional design and how you might flip elements where, you know, maybe it's, hey, my lecture's a podcast and here's what you need to come prepared for and here's the discussion element, you know, there's design opportunities within that to help that. Because no one wants someone to be sitting in front of a computer that long. How do you keep it engaging and keep it around the conversation and learning?
Jen, can you talk to us about, and I don't know if you've done anything with this, even know yet, but how behind do we feel realistically? You know, I don't want to hear any mumbo jumbo about, no, no, they're not behind because we all know that's garbage from last year. And now all of this. I mean, I think that at some point in time, we all have to understand that, yes, our kids are going to be behind. This isn't because of the West Bend School District. This is because of a pandemic that's gripping the nation. But at some point, you know, we're going to churn out kids here who didn't get the proper education. And it's not our fault. I'm just pointing out the obvious. I mean, I've got a senior who's about to graduate, who, you know, missed, you know, a third of or quarter of her junior year and now her senior year is pretty much garbage as well. So what is, you know, what is she going to go to college? Will she be behind? And I feel much more sorry for the younger children. I mean, somebody who had a third grader last year, I would be freaking out right now if I had a third grader last year who missed so much and now is, you know, potentially been quarantined for 40 days or whatever your number was, you know? I mean, these are concerns that I have. I know we're not doing a lot of that state testing, but how are we assessing how far behind our kids are?
So when I think about locally, what I would want to do is unpack the next leg of numbers, which is our winter assessments, which allow me to look at and analyze growth. Because when I have the starting measure and that next growth measure, I want to look at the system's capacity. What have we done? What do we need to let go of? What do we need to shift? And which levers are we going to pull and focus on to accelerate out growth? And there's ways to do that. So it's going to look like probably, and that's what I talked about, our system capacity, because we might have to take some things off the plate eventually. We might need to look at, you know, I've had families reach out like, what about year-round models? How can we do this? How could we use the summer term and shift that differently? When you look at nationally, I have friends who are in national assessment and they talk about it taking up to three years to kind of slowly grow back and get what we have lost, eroded out of that experience for kids. Just because of, there's so many pieces. It's not just the instruction that we're in attention to. It's all the social emotional learning. It's how we're balancing that. I know when you talk about garbage for your child, you don't mean the instructional experience in those. You just mean that she's been negatively impacted and had things eroded. And as you said, it's, you know, different experiences, different things, and how do we push that back in for kids? But they are talking about potentially a couple of years to gain that back. So our work ahead is going to be analyzing growth and pushing on those instructional pieces that accelerate that. We need the biggest return on investment with all of our instruction that we can get.
Kurt?
Yeah, I have a, maybe a different take on just trying to fight for every day in-person. I think the kids are safer in school than at home, just because they're not at home. Because I work in this community, I'm in this community, I see them all over the place when they're not in school. So to me, we've done such a great job and I want to commend the staff and people on keeping our schools open. I just had a couple of people say, West Bend Schools, you're doing a lot better. So I'm sorry to hear that we have 12 new cases today, but I would rather fight for every day. I mean, also my perspective, I'm looking at the Christmas break. So you've got 10 to 12 days that they're off. Hopefully, if, yes, they're with family, they might catch it when they're not at school if unfortunately, some people are socializing with their family. But then when they're in school, we have all our measures to keep people safe. So that's my perspective.
We don't disagree. We've noted, public health is noted, Children's Hospital has praised schools for their mitigation efforts. And, you know, you heard me say publicly before, you know, hey, when you're off on quarantine, it doesn't mean all of you go out to lunch together. So I think if we were looking at, like you said, if you were going to be really strategic and be very conservative about it, it's really looking at minimally virtual that week following each one of those breaks, giving teachers some planning times to prepare for that. Or if you're looking at some kind of co-horted secondary schedule where you follow that, it means those kids are with you. It's not like last spring, emergency distance learning where you're on your own and you have all this loose time. It's your part of your class, like Paul had to show up tonight at 5:30 and he's logged in and engaged so that they're with you and we know that they're participating.
So the two days before Thanksgiving and the two days before Christmas proposal is, is, those would be teacher planning days to prepare for that week of virtual that follows the holiday?
Yeah, to prepare and communicate appropriately to families. So families were ready and knew exactly what they needed to do when they return. Because I think, again, that's when you pull and pivot so fast, then it's day one is almost lost to you because where am I supposed to be? What am I supposed to do? And you lose time in those transitions. So that would be helpful. And I think too, you know, some of the kids, it might allow people to do some targeted communication with kids who are struggling, that kind of thing, just so we can get everyone connected and on point.
I'll call you first. Sorry. So in that instance, if we're looking at November, I'm trying to find the calendar I can see. So you're saying students would be off the 23rd, 24th. Parent, or pardon me, teachers would be planning those two days, so working. Then students would be virtual the 30th through the 4th?
Correct.
And then in the same instance, the 21st and the 22nd would be complete off-days for students? And then they would be virtual then, that entire week of the 4th through the 8th?
Correct.
So we'd essentially have kids home for three weeks in December, which for middle school and high school, I understand there is no childcare concerns unless we have someone with special needs. I understand that. But for elementary, that's going to be a problem. So how can we help parents? I mean, do we have, although this seems, okay, I'm sorry, this just seems ridiculous. So you can't come to school because we don't want to get each other sick, but it's okay for you to go to daycare. I mean, that's just the dumbest thing I've ever heard. I'm sorry, but I'm going to just say it.
Well, the daycare can do different spacing than we have in our classrooms. So I might have 23 kids in a classroom where I can't sustain the space. But if I have the whole school to give over to my community partner for daycare, I can get the space that I need to keep them. I can't do that during the instructional day. I just don't have the space when I'm in full session. So I don't disagree with anyone about any of it.
I'm sorry, it's just ridiculous.
Can you explain better what that looks like?
So if, so you talk about like, well, why can I have this and not this? It's because if you were in a classroom, right, you're 23 kids in one classroom. I don't have six feet around everyone. I don't have the physical space, nor can I split my classes and do kind of a daycare setup myself either. I don't have enough physical space. And I've asked in the community for extra space. So I don't have enough of that. So we've surveyed our families. That's out now. If you didn't do it, please do it because we really mean it. If you need care, access to care, what do we need so our community partners can say, okay, for this week, which is nice for them because we can flood that with staff, we can look at that, and I can spread them out in a building. So I can give them the space so it would look different. I don't want to do anything to family. I want to still have meals, transportation, care when they need it. But I'm just looking ahead, knowing it's brewing.
No, I can understand all of that. But I mean, in addition to this being a pain for family members to try and figure out, this also could be a financial strain, correct? Because they, they're going to have to pay for daycare then for approximately, what, one, two extra days on the front end? I'm just looking at November, and then a whole nother week, correct? I mean, if I'm mom and I have to work, I'm a nurse, you know, and I have to go to work, I don't want to infect grandma, so I'm not going to ask grandma to babysit, or maybe grandma lives in Arkansas. So now I've got to pay out of my pocket for childcare.
Absolutely a potential.
I mean, I realize there's no way to win this, guys. I realize that. I'm just pointing out like, like this is, I mean, you know, this doesn't affect any of us at the table with small children. So like, we're not instantly feeling that pocketbook, but I mean, you know, you're paying babysitters these days, what? Seven, eight, nine bucks an hour for a whole day?
And to our community. I think we all want to affirm that, you know, that's what we want to be is in session. That's what we've always wanted to do was create choice and opportunity. But you're right, everything has a consequence.
Do you feel like doing nothing with this calendar is an option?
You could, you could choose to do that. Then I would come back and say, I need planning days for my staff. Because what we're doing right now is not sustainable for the planning. So I would minimally then start crafting a plan for embedded planning days because that foot in both worlds is taking its toll on the instruction. And I couldn't be more proud of our instructors and what people are doing every day. But I know that they all feel like they're producing less than their best work. I talk with them a lot about, it's as if everyone's a new teacher all over again. So whether they're at home and having to do distance instruction or they've got kids at home and kids in front of them, you know, it's trying to prepare all that and do it to a level that they want, it's taking a toll. a toll.
Okay, one last question. So the surveying that's happening now, what's, I suppose they're not all in though? You don't have all of the elementary surveys in?
Well, we had surveyed our staff earlier as well, but no, we just launched, I'd have to look at the return rate, and I can report that.
I mean, I don't even know about-
But we started asking about who needed childcare, who would need that. If we were to shift something, who needs support from us?
I mean, do you feel like that's 50% of the kids?
60%?
60 students as of today.
60 students would need childcare.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's fine.
1% have responded?
Very few. We only have 60 kids K through 8 who would need daycare identified as of today.
Okay, but how many kids do we realistically have K through 8 in the district?
Thousands.
Thousands, yeah.
So I mean, like that, parents just haven't gotten to it, or else they're just like flooded with too much other stuff to realize.
Or they're waiting to figure out what is it, and do I or don't I need care?
Or they all thought this was going to be over last week on Wednesday, like we were promised. And see, now, once again, promises have been broken to all of us, so.
The most popular choice that parents choose, because we asked them what day of the week they wanted, or dependent upon the district, probably 85% is dependent upon the district's plan. So they can't identify what day.
Sure, until they know from us. I get you.
So I think that's why we wanted to, again, nothing's perfect. You can't win anything at this point. We just want to create and keep all those lanes open so that we can continue providing instruction for kids.
The way I see this, okay, the cohort option is just the 7th through 12th grade, right? And so we're really having, the way I'm hearing this, is we're having the biggest challenge with the lower grades, correct?
Well, there's challenges right now everywhere because of the space.
But I mean, with what we're talking about right now, it's because of childcare.
Yeah, I think that implication for families are, you know, when they need care.
And, I mean, I guess, thinking back, and hate to admit how long it's been since my three kids were that little, but it is harder to not know when they're going to be off. And I know we've had kids that have had to quarantine for 30 days. And so then there, that creates childcare problems too. And so there's no winning. So, but if you could anticipate a few weeks in advance that you're going to be off, and that could mitigate closing for the whole month, it is a roll of the dice. I admit that. But we need to consider that not closing at all could mean that some kids still have to be out all month. And there's no way to know in advance.
So the segments of the recommendations, so we talked about the AABB, we talked about, can you recap this one more time, please?
So, tell me if I'm hearing this right. I hear it's more kind of palatable to the board to look at virtual learning for the one week post-break versus looking at that entire chunk. Is that, that's off the table, right? The whole block of 20 days is off the table?
The whole-
You could go, if you look at that calendar, you could go from November 30th to January 8th and just declare virtual that whole time.
I say no to that.
And that's kind of what I was-
Just my opinion, yeah.
Garnering from the conversation, did anyone want to-
Yeah, I would, I can give you my opinion and be done with it if that's easier. About a month before school started, we presented the public, we voted and approved our back-to-school operating plan. And I think at that time, and I think it still stands today, our parents know that this is a year where we have to be very flexible as parents, as teachers and students. And my kids just got back from a three-week quarantine, and it was terrible. But my wife and I knew that that was a possibility. It happened to us. We worked it out where we stayed home, one of us, obviously, to monitor a 7th grader and a 5th grader. I think that, like I said, that still stands today. I think every day is precious in person. I am not in favor of putting in weeks of virtual learning anywhere. I am not in favor of an A and B schedule anywhere. Coming back to our teachers need some planning days, I'm looking at December 21st and 22nd. I think it's way too short a notice to give the 23rd and 24th of November off. That's in two weeks. I was in favor of that four weeks ago. I'm not in favor of it two weeks out. I think our community would have a fit if we did that. I think our community would have a fit if we put in even just one week of virtual learning the week of the 30th, and another week, the week of January 4th. I think every day is precious. I realize, and I think our parents realize, there's a possibility decorum could be closed, the rest of the week. There's a possibility we can't find enough subs, and the whole district might be closed a day or two. But I think right now, we have a plan. We've been following that plan. We keep trucking along unless something drastic happens, and we got to close a school or close the district. But to proactively go after a week here of virtual, a week here of virtual, and A and a B, I've talked to several community members about that A and B schedule at the high school. And the people who really want that, the people who have reached out to me, are the kids with athletes. And some of them have chosen to keep their kids home so that they can play their sport and they don't have to worry about it. But then they circle back and say, well, jeez, my kid's been home from two weeks and it's been terrible. Can you move half the kids out of the building so that my kid can come back to school for at least two days a week? Well, that ain't fair to the kids who aren't in sports. That ain't fair to the kids who want to be there five days a week. So that's why I'm not in favor of that. If we need some more planning days for staff, I realize, our staff, man, I mean, they have been working their tails off. I mean, they're doing God's work right now, teaching our kids, trying to stay safe, trying to keep their kids safe, doing a mix of virtual and in-person stuff. So if they need some more days, I'm looking at December 21st and 22nd, and that's it. That'd be my only change to this calendar.
The other piece that's in front of families right now is an instructional change for full virtual at the semester. So they have to declare whether or not they're returning from full virtual or entertaining that. So that's an option in front of families too, not to lose sight of that one.
As I said, I agree with what Joel said. I would, again, fight for every day to get kids in school, because I think they're safer there.
Well said, Joel. I agree.
I'm not going to argue that it was well said, but I do think that the continual, I'm quarantined again, I'm quarantined again, I'm quarantined again, is getting real old. It's getting real old for everyone. It's messing with kids' heads. And I don't think that's healthy either. So while I'm not going to argue that they're not safe in school, I think the whole quarantine is a bunch of baloney. And I will say that to anybody who asks me, nurse or not. This is really messing with our kids. And honestly, you're better off, and I'm not saying this lightly, to get COVID, because you get to come back after 10 days. So you're stuck 14 days if you had sat next to Ralph who had it. I mean, you know, not to pick on you, Ralph, but, I mean, this constant, I know, this constant not knowing what's going on, or this constant fear, Mr. Slash walks in the room and everyone's like, oh, man, it must be me. I got to get quarantined. You know, these kids are sitting on pins and needles at school. It's not fair to them either. So I realize that we've got a problem. I appreciate Joel's comments, and I do agree. But I think we need to think about the other side of that constant quarantining. I mean, I've got a kid right now who did do virtual for two weeks, because she had a dance competition, quite frankly. And I'm not, that's not a hidden factor. The whole darn team almost went virtual. She hated every minute of it. She hated being home. She missed being at school. But in the end, she's like, but I want to dance. So, I mean, it's a catch-22. These kids are having to make decisions that they shouldn't have to make. So while I appreciate your comments, and I do agree with them for the most part, this constant quarantining is out of control. And it's hurting our kids. And I understand it's not a you. I get it's a CDC thing. But at some point in time, somebody needs to come to the realization that you can't keep quarantining everyone. And we're at our capacity limits. Like, our health departments are overworked and underpaid. Our teachers and our administrators aren't getting to do any of their real jobs. They're busy chasing around who the heck sat next to Ralph at lunch. I mean, it's insane. So, you know, as we're looking at this, what's the way to mitigate the quarantining constantly? I don't know, because I don't believe an AABB schedule still is going to mitigate too much of that, quite frankly, because I still sat next to Tony. Or somewhere, I bumped into her in the hallway for more than 15 minutes or whatever the rule is now. So it is a problem. So I don't know that there's a way to solve it. I agree, our teachers are living in two worlds, and that's tough. But our students are living in two worlds, and that's tough for small people. At least, we're all adults, and we're used to getting handed a, you know, pile of you-know-what to deal with. Kids shouldn't have to deal with that. So there's my grandiose. It's horrible. There's no good solution.
The only solution, as you said, is to get space, the physical space, which I don't have to give. Not when I have all kids present. I just don't.
And as much as there is no good solution, we still have to come up with a solution.
But an AABB schedule will not stop quarantining, correct?
Well, it would cut my number of students physically in the building in half, so that I could have six feet. It would stop the game of quarantine.
So I have a question.
Wait, wait, wait. I'm sorry. I just want to go back on record. So you're telling me, if we go to this AABB schedule, we will not be quarantining our students, Ms. Wimmer? That's what I just heard you say, my friend.
I am way too smart to be doing that, because you'd roll tape on me and show it to me. No, but we think it would reduce, because, again, my classrooms don't have that kind of space. Any player I pluck out, it's taking 20 to 30 kids with you. But if I had classrooms with that space, I had half the number of kids in the lunchroom, I have space.
And the way I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, the AABB is, you're with the same people, say, the A group is Monday and Tuesday. You're only ever with those people. And then the B group is in, is at school, present at school on Thursday and Friday. So they don't interact with each other unless, in person, unless they're doing it outside of school.
Right. Not only do you have the physical space, but you cut the number of exposures to them in half.
And then they're still engaging and present in school, virtually, like Paul is tonight. So they're still getting the same instruction as the kids who are sitting there physically. So I was not against, I was not in favor of it over the summer, because I didn't, hadn't seen it in person. But since I have heard about it from my son, it seems to be working for them. He's older, obviously, and which is why the 7th grade and up, I think, is, I don't think it'd work for younger, but.
Well, and the other piece, like you said, you know, I think the other piece that we've done well is not over commit. We've taken chunks. I'm not talking about an entire year. I'm talking about a chunk of time. And maybe that's what we need to do, is look at something for a small amount of time with a small group. Just try, before you buy it at the high school. Because right now, they're doing every week where they select. That's not working, and it's not sustainable. You know, so maybe that's where we need to try something first.
I would be okay, I don't want to do anything different right now with 6th grade and with Silverbrook and elementary schools. I like that. If I could have a magic wand, it's all up to me. It would just be Badger and the high school try the AABB for, like, it's like a test. And then we'll get feedback, and it would just be from Thanksgiving to Christmas, for example. And maybe it's a complete disaster, or maybe it's the best decision we ever made. We'll find out after Christmas. Maybe there'll be, people will be begging to do it the rest of the year, or maybe they'll say, never do this again, and we go back to the way it has been all fall.
I'm not willing to take the risk. And what I mean by that is, you know, we tried emergency distance learning in March, and I like the term for that, because, boy, we left on a Friday, and we weren't expecting that by Monday. And our teachers, staff, and ministry, we did the best we could. But by the end of it, we had to say, well, you know what? We can't even give you a grade. We're just going to have to move to pass fail grades, because it was so out of whack and different and whatever. I've got a 7th grader, and I want him in school. I'm going to take the risk of sending him five days a week. And if he gets quarantined again, does that stink? Of course it stinks. But I want to take that, I'll take that bet. Five days a week, I want him there. I don't want him there just Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or whatever.
Is it possible to have kids choose to be every day, or do half and half?
So that's the model that we have right now at the high school, where it's self-selected distance learning. And while we saw, when we kind of raised the flag and said, we're hurting, and cases are coming, and we're quarantining in the hundreds, hundreds of parents stepped out and it gave us the room that we needed. Right now, the number of people stepping out is a lot smaller. And it's also, right now, a week by week. That does not work week by week. I would say that we, at least minimally, if you were going to do a choice around that, that needs to be for a longer term of time, so that it's a commitment by the student and the family, and that our teachers and departments could look at that and structure it differently, so that if one took point on being virtual, or one wanted to do this or that or plan, that could be done. Again, I don't think it's sustainable, the way we're running it right now.
I thought the self-selected distance learning was the, going into the virtual academy, so.
No, right now, they survey every week and ask, are you in or out for the next week? So our teachers might have four kids in a class one week, 15 the next.
Then that's for the whole week, though.
Yeah. But even, that's too short of time for planning. And it doesn't allow us to, like I said, you might have a section with four kids, and I've got another one. Really, they should be combined in some way. I have the space, just so that we're not shifting the instruction. You know, when I plan to have a rich discussion around a topic, and I have four kids, you know, that-
But aren't the ones that are doing it virtually, like, aren't they like Paul?
They are and aren't in some cases. So that's, again, that's some of the planning elements, where they might be doing some, we would call them synchronous, same time like Paul, or asynchronous activities. And that's where they need to plan around things, or take point on who's going to deliver that part. Because that's the hard part, is treading the water to try and plan for all arenas right now.
All right. So I do believe we have two issues. We have high school issues, which are different than everyone else.
Yep.
And I'm not trying to, you know, just pick on the high school, because that's not what I'm doing. But there are other considerations at the high school to consider. I have said this before. There are students who come to school who don't give a hoot about the actual educational experience. They're there for sports, they're there for their mental capacity, whatever it is, okay? So we have those kids. So I don't have a problem treating the high school differently than we treat the rest of the school. I would be concerned with virtual if I had a 7th grader. Like, that would concern me, because I know my own kids. And in 7th grade, I don't know that two of them would have done well at that, you know? I think by the time they get to high school, that's a little different world. I could live with an AABB trial at the high school to try and solve some of this. Because I do know that, I'm watching my own kids, and there's two kids in class, and, you know, 17 are virtual, and then the teacher's got a glitch, and basically is like, I can't get my screen to work. Sorry, Tim, but it has happened. And, you know, the whole class is just kind of like sitting there giggling, you know? So I would be more in favor of seeing an AABB thing, or whatever the heck you want to call it, at the high school, and leaving the other grades to function. But I got to tell you, if I'm a parent, and we have to close a whole school for a week because we don't have any teachers, that's not going to make me happy either. And I'm going to start to question, well, weren't we anticipating some of this? You know, I just, it's a double-edged sword. We're going to get nailed, no matter how, whatever we come up with here. But if you came to us with a proposal that said, I do think an AABB at the high school is a better option to give our teachers some more stability, and being able to plan better at the high school, I appreciate that, and I think that might be a better route to go than, I don't know, to me, Badger kids, that's still kind of young, and some of them are maybe not mature enough to handle that type of a situation. And they, you know, they do perform better in the five-day-a-week environment or something. I don't know. I don't know. I guess, Mr. Slash, what do you think the students want? Or have we bothered to survey the students? I mean, I only live with two of them. I don't live with the whole school. So, thank God.
If given the choice, students want to meet face to face. Excuse me. But here's the reality. If we just do that, we have 26, 27, 28 kids in a class. Let's try it here, I'm sorry. We're sending kids home, a lot of kids home, in quarantine. Not one sometimes, not two sometimes, but three or four times. And when you look a kid in the eye, and you say, this isn't about sports. But when you look a kid in the eye and say, you're not going to be in school for two weeks, and they cry, and their parents cry, we're depriving and denying kids opportunities. So it's really not their choice. They're following the rules. They're wearing the mask. But we can't keep them six feet apart from each other in classrooms. Okay? That is the reality. So we can- So we can say we want them in school five days a week. Absolutely. The kids want to be in school. The teachers want them in school. I want them in school. Do we have the water? But we're going to send them home. We're just going to send them home. And to the point that the parent made and others have made, it's better to be in school some days a week than not at all. That's my feeling. I think that's how the kids feel. And you can say an AB or an AABB schedule is not ideal, and it certainly isn't. But it's something and we can reevaluate it in a couple of weeks. But we also have students who are choosing home learning right now that are disengaged. This is an opportunity to bring those kids back into school because we got kids choosing home learning for the wrong reasons. I mean, I left to go to a meeting and I saw, you know, I saw kids in a vehicle just driving around. They were supposed to be in school that day because we're providing synchronous learning opportunities and they weren't taking advantage of it. So, you know what, I'd like to bring some of those kids back, too. So like Superintendent Wimmer said, provide some stability. It breaks my heart to think that my kids or anybody's kids want to be in school five days a week, but now they'll be in school two days a week. But both of my kids have been sent home, too, because of quarantine. And that was hard, too. It's so unpredictable.
I appreciate that. I appreciate, thank you for the comments. And obviously, this is an incredibly important topic and the last thing I want to do is cut it short. But I would like to see if we can kind of draw this to consensus. The last I heard were comments around openness to an AABB schedule at the high school for a period of time. I'm just wondering if there are those who are, who still feel in favor of that? If there's another proposal that others wish to bring forward? Joel, I think yours was to maximize every opportunity, I think it was, for in-person. Others, other ideas, other thoughts?
Is this a motion or is this just us voicing?
Well, great question because it does say approval on the agenda. It does say approval on the agenda.
So if that's, you would need someone to make a motion, a second, and a vote accordingly. And then it will either die on the floor or someone can put forward a second.
I'll stab at this one.
All right.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, and John, if I get my dates wrong, please correct me. I'd like to make a motion that we look at November 23rd and 24th as teacher planning days across the district. And then they're off that week of, the kids are off that whole week. I would like to say, starting on the 30th, we move to an AABB or whatever you'd like to call it, schedule, at the high school. And I guess I'm going to go bold and I would like to suggest that we do that all the way through January 6th at the high school unless things change dramatically in the world and everyone suddenly forgets about COVID. And then we could go back to normal. So then January 11th would be the first day that, I guess, we'd have to reevaluate is what I'm trying to spit out there. That was a bad motion, but I'm thinking as I'm talking.
All right.
Exams are there.
Oh, exams are the week of the 11th?
Yes.
So they'd be coming and going for those exams at the high school anyway, that week of the 11th?
They start on Wednesday of that week, so...
So realistically, then, back to normal would be January 20th, as I'm looking at that calendar? Because the 19th, is it the 18th and the 19th they're off?
Correct, students are.
Okay, so let me rephrase. So I would like to make a motion that we, this is for the high school.
High school only.
High school only, has the AAB schedule starting?
Has planning days on, you can say so moved. So you're looking at, for the high school, to have instructional planning days for all staff, 23rd and 24th, and for students to go into a cohort model that has an alternating schedule for students to be in place for the remainder of the first semester, which concludes on the 15th of January.
Yes, and I guess my motion for the undergrads, so anything below nine?
Well, you can just vote on simply what's in front of you.
Oh, then that's all I really want to take care of right now is the high school.
So can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead, Paul.
Now that we've got a motion on the floor, I don't know how this plays out. But to Joel's point on forewarning to our parents in the district, with the 23rd, 24th, you know, being two weeks out, is what if, Nancy, we were to look at moving those two planning days to the 30th and the 1st? That also gives us a little bit of a buffer on the back end of everybody being together for the holidays and doesn't change the overall mix of instruction versus planning days?
Absolutely. So you have a friendly amendment to your motion on the floor. Would you like to do that or would you choose to go forward?
Mr. Roberts.
I would accept the friendly amendment.
Okay, so again, then, accepting that friendly amendment to that motion, it's looking at beginning on, with planning days, November 30th and the 1st for the high school staff to create a cohorted alternate schedule to take them through the end of first semester. At all other status quo.
You second that, Tony? All right. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Let me see if I have it right, for planning days, November 30th and December 1st, high school only. And also for high school only, beginning on the 30th of November, a cohort model with alternating schedule through the remainder of the first semester.
Which is January 15th.
Which is January 15th. Thank you. That's a motion and a second. Final discussion, or additional discussion, I should say.
I'm not in favor of it. I appreciate Principal Schloss's comments. There's nothing, there is absolutely no guarantee that this will prevent quarantining. Zero. Zero. These kids who are on athletic teams, if they get together in a huddle, they're all quarantined. Done. They walk out of the building, they walk hand in hand, get into a car, they're done. So...
They're doing it anyways, Joel.
I know, I realize that, but what can happen now with this AB schedule? Let's say a kid goes to school on Monday and Wednesday for two weeks, okay? In two weeks, they will have already missed six possible days of being in person. Six. And after two weeks, oh, guess what, you got to quarantine now for two weeks. Period. Now you're out for 10 more days. You're out 16 days. And the parent could look back and say, you know what, I could have had my kid in school for six more days versus having this AB schedule.
I think the nuance there is that they wouldn't just be out in absence of instruction. That the instruction would look and feel different in that model for kids. They wouldn't just be, and we would hope that it would be engaging them in a different way than it is now.
I can appreciate that and with all due respect, I've never had so many emails than I had between March of last year and the end of the school year. And some teachers were great and some teachers were terrible. Our teachers want to teach in person as well. They will try as hard as they can to do this virtual thing. But my brother did a schedule like this in Colorado and on Fridays was a day off. The teachers weren't doing a darn thing. They had Monday, Wednesday, they had Tuesday, Thursday. Parents felt like the instruction went from here to here and it was a complete disaster. I don't think two days of planning with teachers is enough to go from what we're doing now to such a huge, hugely different structure. I'm not confident enough in it. Something like this would take a month to plan. I like the fact that the motion is just with the high school. But because I think it would be an absolute disaster with Silverbrook and Badger students, not even possible for elementary students. But this won't solve, again, I go back to, I'm going to take that gamble. I want my kid in school every possible day. Our back to school operating plan warned me that it was a possibility that my kid might get quarantined. If I could have him in school for just the rest of this week, that's a win for me. Four more days. If they can get through Monday through Friday next week, great. If they hit quarantine, dang it. But at least we got two good weeks in there.
And it, I mean, to your point, it really is a celebration. I mean, I'm happy that we've been able to stay the course this long.
How many kids are doing distance learning right now at the high school, this week? How many opted?
Today's choice of selected home learning is 207 compared to 196 students that are out for contact tracing.
So we have 400 students out of school right now. At the high school alone, which is what, how many kids are at the high school total?
I can give you, so in-person percentages, because we took our virtual kids out, that would be about 11% for our contact tracing and almost 12% for selected home learning.
A quarter of your kids.
So we've got 25% of the kids out anyways.
Correct.
All right.
Well, I just want to, I just want to quickly say, I'll be voting no on the motion just from what I stated before. And that proves, the facts are, if I'm hearing the facts are, there's been minimal if spread in school. They're safer in school when we have this many kids out in the community without masks, getting together. That's when the spread happens. So I am for fighting for every day in school.
Our community is open. Whether we like it or not, our restaurants are open, our bars, our parks, or whatever is open. I don't want to be the guy who closes school. And I realize we're going to try to teach them virtually and do this thing. I want my kid in school and I will be the parent here and a board member who will be very disappointed if we don't give our parents that option of trying, trying, I will use that word, to send them five days a week. And I'll make an announcement to all of our parents. We cannot socially distance your kids in our schools. There, I said it. We can't do it.
Can I make a comment to that?
So take that risk if you will, but if you want your kid in school, send them.
That's exactly right. I don't want you to think I was advocating for the cohort. I'm just telling you what would happen if we went to the cohort. It's tough telling kids to quarantine, okay? That's also a fact. Fact is, we can't physically distance kids when they're in classes and, you know, they've got 23, 24, 25 of their peers sitting with them in class. I'm taking the same risk you are. I've chosen home learning, I'm sorry, in-person learning. So I don't want you to think that I was pushing it one way or the other, just stating what, you know...
I understand, yeah.
From my point of view as a principal, telling kids, man, it's not easy. This is, these are tough times.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Any other comments? Nancy?
I don't like continuing to quarantine kids. How many kids, and I don't know if we know this answer, but how many kids have had multiple quarantines? A lot. A lot. And while I appreciate your comments, Joel, I do. What are you going to say to that kid who's looking you in the eyeball crying, saying, you know, I'm doing everything right and I keep getting screwed over because I have to sit next to Jim and it's not my problem that Jim doesn't do what he's supposed to do? How many teachers have we quarantined and paid them to sit at home and not teach at all because they're quarantined on our dime? Okay, I mean, you're concerned about that. There's your question. How many times does that happen? How are parents going to feel if we have to close a whole school because we have no teachers? They're going to be really mad, too. I mean, nobody's going to be happy no matter how we do this. I can appreciate that.
I agree with that 100%.
You know, we are never going to please everyone, so...
I'm fighting for my case. You're fighting, I appreciate that.
I'm not really, I'm not really fighting for a case. I'm honestly, I'm really concerned about kids' mental health. I am super concerned about that. You've heard me say it a million times. I'm sorry, but I do not believe that this is, you know, an easy answer. And we're going to definitely hurt a child no matter how we answer this. There will be a child in our district who will be hurt by this, no matter what the situation is, no matter how we answer it. So your comment that they're safer in school, well, I agree with you 100%. But if I chose virtual because my kid plays soccer, you know, and he's not engaging now and he's running around at Panera and Quick Trip all day and I'm at work, that's not helping the situation either. We're not helping him. So I mean, it's a bad choice no matter how we look at it. I don't have the answer, but I do think that if we're going to move forward and you're going to keep everyone in school, you're going to continue this mess that we have where kids are choosing by the week. Maybe you have to make them choose by the month to help teachers? Maybe that's a better solution? I don't know. I don't know, but I mean, we can't keep burning out our teachers either. We're going to lose them, too. So I mean, I think you better think long haul, we've got some teachers who might be saying, gee, maybe this isn't the profession for me and this is a lot of, this is a lot this year. So I mean, you've got a bigger problem than just kids.
I agree with that. And I guess I will come back to, you know, with your motion, the way it sits, if I'm counting days right, the AB cohort means best case scenario, that kid is only going to be in school for best case scenario, 10 or 11 days, depending on how you look at finals.
But they're still learning, Joel. You're making it sound like they're out, like, partying.
Our parents were not satisfied with the learning we did between March and June last year.
It's different now. It's different now. I'll argue with you all day long. It's different now.
They're on the computer. They have to sign in. If your kid doesn't sign in at the appropriate time, you get the same email as if they were truant and says, hey, where was Lacey Justman today? She was supposed to be on whatever the class was. So I'm going to argue that point and say, that's not true. And, you know, they are engaged and they are learning the same thing that the kid is in the classroom. I just, I don't want to take away choices from families. So if we're not going to go to this AABB thing, I hope that we're still going to allow children to choose virtually. And perhaps the better solution is to make them choose a longer period of time than a week. I don't know. But I'm just trying to come up with a solution that is at least better than what we have now. And I can appreciate as a teacher, I mean, how would you like to just find out week to week? Like, well, I had 72 sales calls scheduled and now this week, guess what, it's down to four. I mean, how do you plan your week then? So think about your teachers a little bit there, too.
All right. Good discussion, everyone. Most of your objections. I think I'm going to call the motion. All right. Do we need the motion restated one last time or we're all good?
Do you do that?
Yes.
Motion restated one last time? All right, let's see if I have this right. So for the high school only, November 30th and December 1 would be teacher planning days. Beginning on the 30th of November, a cohort model for high school only with alternating schedules to last through the end of the remainder of the first semester, which is January 15th.
Do we need to specify what the cohort schedule means as far as? I don't like what you said about the Colorado, about Monday, Thursday, and Tuesday, Friday. That's too much mixing. I like Monday, Tuesday, A group, Thursday, Friday, B group, cleaning on Wednesday.
And the students would still, they would all be participating in distance learning that day. So you'd have two in-person and three virtual for each cohort. And where you put them in the week, like you said, that consistency, I think, is key for the staff, for the kids.
All right. I will call the motion. And this is why it's handy to have the random sheet so that we can... So this will be a surprise to us all of the order. All right, I'm calling the motion. Mr. Rebholz.
No.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Dove is absent. Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Swiger votes yes. Mr. Angert?
No.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Four yes, two no, one absent. The motion carries. All right. Thank you, everyone, for a very civil discussion on a very difficult, tough topic where there is a no-win situation. But I appreciate that and I hope that our board will, in partnership with the administration, continue to analyze the situation and react. We may need to make changes. In fact, I'm probably certain of it going forward, so...
So one thing that I think all of us are really proud of is how we've worked with our families as partners and the choices that we provided. So although this is, that we will communicate that right away to our families around that and then start planning with them because maybe there are situations that are different and allow us that space to plan, to have those. So we'll work with our staff and our families to continue to do that and report back transparently to our board and community.
Also, when you're choosing the, you know, Nancy goes on Monday, Wednesday, or Monday, Tuesday. If I have younger siblings who also attend the high school, you would give all the Justman kids the same days, is that correct? For driving purposes?
All families regardless of, so if you were, the easiest way to do that is by alphabet. But knowing that some families have split names, we would keep families together.
Okay, just to confirm because that would be painful as well.
All right. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is approval of technology education course name changes. And that is Tim.
Good evening, everyone. Real quickly this evening, at our last board meeting, we had some additional changes to some of our career and tech ed courses.
some of our career and tech ed courses. Before you this evening is a recommendation to change, two of our graphics or courses that we have at the high school, to change one word in each name to mirror what Maraine Park has changed. So Maraine Park has an advisory committee that meets twice a year. Myself and a few other people sit on that committee from the district here, and so they are changing out of the word graphic communications to graphic design. So the proposal in front of you has us changing to a course titled Intro to Graphic Design and the second course being Advanced Graphic Design. And this would just mirror the course names that are Maraine Park.
I move to approve the recommended changes of Introduction to Graphic Communications to become Introduction to Graphic Design and Advanced Graphic Communications to become Advanced Graphic Design.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the course changes as presented. Any final discussion? I'll call the vote. Ms. Dove is absent. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Mr. Angert?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Swiger votes yes. Ms. Justman?
Yes.
All right, that's six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are approved. All right, moving along, the High School ISICS Independent Study in Community Service Course Revision.
Hello again, everyone. Yes, I'm here to talk about the ISICS program. ISICS has been a class offered at the high school for years, but as it aligns to our post-secondary readiness, it makes more sense to continue to offer the class, but change its name with a little more focus on some activities and a career connection. So I'm proposing that we change the name to Independent Study and Career Exploration. And with that change, students will be asked to do some more self-reflection and assessments and study as it relates to careers. So every student should have an academic and career plan at prime graduation. This aligns nicely with that.
Any questions?
Is this a pass/fail class, and is there any credit for it?
It's pass/fail, yes. It is for credit.
Is it a one credit, like, it's a one or a half credit, or what is?
Half a credit.
Okay, thank you.
You can take it multiple times.
Yeah, you can take it, you can take it twice. You can get it, take it for up to one credit.
Okay.
Okay.
What kind of careers are focused topics in the class?
It's really self, it's self-choice.
Okay.
So whatever the student, I mean, the one nice thing about the high schools, as you know, Kurt, is it's a comprehensive high school. We have so many offerings and so many different career paths a student could take, but it's about getting serious about what, you know, you're interested in. Right now, if you take this class, kind of, as a seminar class, you kind of sit in that environment, not doing any reflection or any study of that actual career, and it's, it's not as rigorous, put it that way. So if we tie it to academic and career planning, we think we can achieve that.
Mr. Schloss? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Kurt, go ahead.
Maybe just one final comment that is, not everyone's cut out to go to college, so I appreciate all our texts and trades and exploring alternative paths to make people have a productive job and have a family, and so thank you for these courses that help achieve that for students.
Yeah, we're very fortunate we preserve those classes over the decades and expanded them.
What would be the, okay, help me understand better what other courses we offer that fall under the career exploration or life planning that this would be a substitute for or an option for?
Well.
Choosing this instead of that, so to speak.
It's not, it's not choosing this instead of something else. It's revamping what we currently offer, which right now, again, if you, I don't know if you've got a copy of the proposal, but in the past, this course was aligned to community service while exploring your career interest. Right now, places like Columns don't like to accept this class for volunteer hours, service hours. They believe those hours should take place outside the walls of the building.
Okay. I, I. I appreciate that. That's a, that is accurate. So does that mean that there, so it's basically to help kids not take advantage of it and choose it for the right reasons?
Choose it for the right reasons. And every ninth, at the high school level, every ninth grader, 10th grader, 11th, and 12th grader have a laid-out ACP or Academic and Career Plan. Okay, so there are activities and things that they must do in order to progress through that plan. And what's nice about this plan, it also ties into Zello, which is college and career readiness software. So you can take a look, let's say you're interested in being a plumber. You go to Zello, you read about where the jobs are, what kind of schooling is required or certifications, what kind of opportunities, you know, exist in your area, in the state, nationwide? It forecasts a lot of that stuff. It also tells you what you would do in the job. So we want to, you know, we want to give it some teeth.
If I could just say, I think this program is great. My oldest daughter did this, you know, she's always wanted to be a special education teacher. She had the opportunity to do this. She got to work at all grade levels, so it helped her really kind of hone in on, did she want to work with high school students, middle school, or elementary? And it really gave her a really good foundation going into college. And it also actually helped her to get a summer job because she had had that experience, so she was able to work at Threshold as well. So I think it's a great program, and I think the enhancements are awesome.
Thank you.
Great, so this is informational at this time, correct? We'll bring it back for a motion next meeting, or bring it back for potential approval?
All right.
Great. All right, thank you. All right, that takes us to committee reports and report on the curriculum committee. And Toni, I think you were going to give that report.
Yes, we had the meeting, okay, first of all, I was at the, I was at the meeting. I'm not the chairman of the committee, so I took notes for myself not to report, and I found out a minute before the meeting started that I'm going to be doing this report.
We can help you with that, if you'd like.
I apologize if this is a little, a little disorganized, but I'm going to do my best, and Laura's available to correct me if I make any mistakes, which is probably going to happen. So the first thing we did is look at the academic progress update, and what I took away from the data, we were able to test our students, however, we're, the, so we could do a comparison of where they were last fall to this fall. However, it was important to note that the testing was only for the people who were in person, had selected the in-person option. And unfortunately, we declined in performance in every grade except for 10th grade. So that, that is a concern, but also to be expected with the, the emergency distance learning in the spring. I was concerned about the kids that are, have chosen the virtual option. We need to make sure that they and their parents know whether or not they're on track. And everyone will be taking the STAR assessment, I'm sorry, K through 10 students will participate in the STAR assessment in January, which will include the virtual learners. We will be reviewing further, could you, would you like to add anything to that segment of the agenda?
The STAR assessment will, the window opens in December, and we just have a nice chunk of time for it. Our virtual students will have a little narrower time that we do that. And, and then just a reminder that we did not take state assessments except for the ACT exam and the access exam last year. This year, the access test has been pushed off to February by the state, and, but we will not have forward results or ACT Aspire results. There will not be a public release of a report card this year.
So, yeah, no state report card due to the spring shutdown, and that will be the case for every district, not just ours. And the ACT is, when, when it's a virtual ACT, it's still happening in the building, but it's online. It's not, they're not taking the ACT from home. That was another key thing I remember from your, your report. Okay, the, the second item on the agenda was the West Bend Virtual Academy elective class enrollments. There are currently over 700 students at the 6th through 12th grade levels, taking one or more courses in the Virtual Academy. And a lot of our kids are taking one class virtually, and they could, they, our new library at the high school is a great place for them to do that. They get to explore things like Introduction to Criminology or Fundamentals of Veterinary Science or Agriculture, and Sign Language is also very popular. So I see it as a really exciting way for kids to try out things in high school or earlier instead of college where it's going to cost them a lot more money. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that part of the?
We just talked about some of the more popular elective courses, and do we need to, it's good information for us as we look for future planning for, keep making sure that we have a wide variety of courses for our students and some opportunities for them. And as Nancy was talking about, the, a lot of the career classes are very, are popular. Gives students a chance to explore a particular career, and then the sign language, as you said.
Yes, yes. And then there's an update on year two of the literacy implementation, and that's where this great chart that you presented, right? It's a, basically filling in comprehensive literacy, scope and sequence for English Language Arts and incorporating social studies and science into, so they have a focus on the topic for quarter, all four quarters, from kindergarten through 8th grade, to make sure that they're relating, and you can probably explain this better than me.
The, we're talking specifically about the language workshop portion. So that spread, that tablet view is that 7, 12 by, what is it? 17 by 11? Yeah, something like.
11 by 17, same thing.
You've seen that before, and we did have some revisions, and that was shared with you previously. But this summer, we had, did some work on it. We had planned on having sub-days throughout this year for our staff to continue to work on it, so that by third quarter, all teachers were trained in the first full implementation unit. Well, that's been paused. So we're looking at other ways for our teams, who are very excited to continue working on it, to do so, but implementation won't happen until next year for that. We're continuing to focus on the areas that we've provided professional development on in the past, continuing to refine our literacy instruction, but not really adding on that new stuff until next year. And again, we can't, it's, we don't have the substitute staff in order to do the pullouts to do that comprehensive planning for the system.
And I also appreciate the template that the teachers are using to help clarify their goals and outcomes for each unit, so thank you.
So that unit design is really, our district undertook a lot of training of staff, I think it's been at least 10 to 15 years, I want to say it's closer to 15 years ago, in understanding by design, which is a methodology for planning units of instruction that starts with kind of that end in mind and has you considering all students along the way. And that the team, the team who is working on planning the units of study kind of retrained, got retrained in that and refocused in that because, well, we have new people, and we just grounding ourselves in that really good process is essential as we begin to plan the units and then execute them eventually.
And the next, the next curriculum committee meeting is December 8, I believe?
Yep. Yes.
All right. That was very good.
Maybe it's better when I don't prepare, is it?
No, it's good. Well, thank you. Obviously, talked about a number of meaty curriculum issues, so thank you for that. All right. That takes us to the, let's see, oh, the board meeting calendar. So Toni, as you had mentioned, the next curriculum committee meeting is on December 8, and our next two board meetings are November 30 and December 14. And I looked at the calendar, and those are the last two meetings we currently have scheduled for the year 2020. So those are the two upcoming. And certainly watch for the public announcements as to whether or not they'll be held here or they'll be held back at the Silverland Arts Center or perhaps somewhere else. Any other items for follow-up communication? Any other items at this time to come before the board? All right. Hearing none. I would move that we adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance, performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action, if necessary, based on its discussion, namely, staff compensation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Nancy. Motion in second to adjourn to executive session. Any final discussion? I will call the roll as soon as I find my sheet here. Here we go. All right, to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Angert?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Dove is absent. Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Swiger votes yes. That's six to zero. All right. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned into executive session.
Are we staying here?
And we will stay in this room.
One moment.
All right. Great.